Good evening, everyone. I'm going to bring to order the school committee meeting of January 7th, 2019. It is six o'clock. I've called the meeting to order. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is anybody else audio or videotaping this meeting? Are you audio or videotaping this meeting? Thank you. At that point, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call on the slot to my left tonight.
Jacob Brady, student rep.
Phil Fonseca.
Sarah Chulio.
Gregory Thompson.
Mitch Fracero.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Solari, secretary.
Thank you very much. Moving to item number two, approval of minutes. Two point one, approval of the December 17th, 2018 executive session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the December 17th, 2018 executive session meeting minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Are you unanimous, Ms. Solari? Moving to item number two point two, approval of December 17th, 2018 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the December 17th, 2018 regular session meeting minutes.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Are you unanimous again, Ms. Solari? Moving to item number three, committee and subcommittee communications. Mr. Brady.
Yeah, so currently, the high school student council is planning our first spring dance, which would be open to all grades to participate. So we're hoping to bring in a successful dance for hopefully this spring. We're working on fundraising right now, and hopefully, we can make it happen. And then also, Spartanum auditions are being held this week after school. And around the building, many people, students and staff alike, are working very hard to prepare for the show coming this spring.
Do you know what the dates are yet?
I'm not certain, but I believe it's in March.
Could be that first weekend in March.
Yeah, maybe.
Or second. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Fonseca.
I make a motion that we move item five point one point one, MSBA update, up to the next item on the agenda.
Second.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Are you unanimous, Ms. Solari? Okay, at this point, Mr. Smith, I'm going to ask you to kind of present the three different projects we have going on. Two different programs. The first MSBA program is the Meadowbrook Elementary Accelerator Repairs. And then we'll move to the second program, East Long Meadow High School. So we can begin by talking about the Meadowbrook Accelerator Repair Program. And we appreciate that.
Sure. So as all of you on the school committee know, and the members of our audience may or may not know, we have two projects underway at Meadowbrook under the Accelerator Repair Program through the Mass School Building Authority. The Accelerator Repair Program is simply that. It's an accelerated program that looks specifically at projects for roof replacement, windows and door replacement, and boiler replacement. So for Meadowbrook, two years ago, we were accepted to replace the windows and doors. And that project is now substantially completed. We are working on the punch list. And originally, when all of the preliminary work and design work was being accomplished, we were designated as a town to receive reimbursement of 55 percent for all eligible areas of that project. So when that's finished, with each submission to the MSBA, they review what we're submitting in terms of what we paid out in the project. And then, all eligible payments that they can reimburse on, we get 55 percent back from the MSBA. The current MSBA program is different than the one that existed probably now eight to 10 years ago, and definitely when Berksland Park Middle School was built. That was a system where the town fronted all of the money, and we were reimbursed after the project was finished. The current program, both Accelerator Repair and the core program work, where you can submit as the project's going on and be reimbursed as they review what you've paid for in the project. So that's Accelerator Repair Project One, that's windows and doors. As that is finishing, we last year were notified, actually, this past June, were notified that we were accepted into the Accelerator Repair Program for a roof replacement at the Meadowbrook School. And that project has also been set at 55 percent reimbursement for eligible portions. The, so far, we hired our owner project manager, and that's the Pink and Company. The way MSBA works is they have vetted owner project manager companies and architectural and design firms. And basically, they do a lottery draw, and then they tell you when you've been accepted that here is your owner project manager, and here is your architectural firm. The architectural firm is Terowski Two Architects. We have met with them, and we are beginning to do the preliminary design document phase. So those are the two Accelerator Repair Programs at Meadowbrook. The core program, which is the one that involves the high school and looking at potentially a new building, is a different program. That's a program that you put in a statement of interest, and in order to put in a statement of interest, you had to have accomplished a facility study, which we did back in 2013. You basically go through their process where they have a system that each year just opened up again on January 4th. You have to log in, and you begin to answer their questions around things such as roof, boiler system, HVAC system, plumbing, all of the different systems you have making up your building. In addition to just some basic facts, when was the building built? How many students are enrolled? All of those things. For the last five years, each year, we have submitted a statement of interest for a core project at the high school. Unfortunately, in the last five years, somewhere in late December, we have learned that they have not invited us into the eligibility period. With this current statement of interest that we submitted back in April of 2018, we also added, through the summer, we added an infrared thermal scan of our roof and gave that report to sort of bolster our statement of interest. In addition to that, I met with the two state representatives and the state senator, discussed their support of the project and enlisting their support a little bit more strongly than just verbal support. And each one submitted a letter to the chairperson of the board of directors, who is the state treasurer, Deborah Goldberg. Unfortunately, though, this, just before the holiday break, we did not get invited into the eligibility period. After the holiday break, I did speak with our liaison, Diane Sullivan from the Mass School Building Authority, and she, as she's done the last few years, sort of broke things down for me. She said there were 70 projects that were submitted, 12 projects were invited into the eligibility period, which is lower than last year. 15 projects were invited in the previous year, which tells me that possibly, construction costs are now increasing, so their budget is not able to handle as much square footage. She also said that our statement of interest was competitive, and has been competitive, each of the last five years, that generally, we are right in the discussion up until they get to that sort of 20 and below phase, when they have to cut to 12. Things that we really have not been able to manufacture that sort of puts other projects above ours is, she said, let me backtrack for a second. She said, obviously, aging systems, which we have, age of the building, which we have, impact to academic programming, which we have, all are taken into consideration and have kept us very competitive. What we don't have is, we don't have an enrollment that's growing, so I can show that we would be overcrowding this building in, say, a year or two. That has jumped the number of projects over the years, at least the five years I've been involved, ahead of us. Yeah, well, the other one is, I'm sorry, thank you, is if you have a portion of your building that actually is condemned, and you can show that it's been condemned through an outside architectural or a design firm, they verify that. Generally, when that happens, to give you an example, you would already be, the best example, actually, we've had a living example here, although we didn't have a statement of interest for the school, would be Maple Shade. In 2011, when that roof was starting to come in from all the snow, that would be an example of a building that you cannot inhabit. Were there an active statement of interest for that building at the time, that might have jumped it to the head of the pack, so to speak. In the actual situation, town has insurance, and an insurance company enabled us to not only repair the roof and replace the roof there on the calf and the gymnasium, but also paid for our transition to, at the time, a school in Wilbraham, so that we could continue school for the Maple Shade students. Finally, the final point that Diane Sullivan made in terms of our statement of interest, because each year, I ask very specific questions after I've gotten over sort of the disappointment and the frustration where my word choice might be less than professional. She said that things that keep us in the discussion are the fact that we know that the school committee is supporting it, and that there has been support from the town, and that they have a good working relationship with us from previous projects.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before I move with opportunity for business to address the committee, does the school committee have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Well, so are we going to talk about our strategy going forward, or we are just going to address what has happened up until now?
I think I'd like to hear from the visitors first.
Okay.
See if we can hear from there, and then move from there on.
Okay.
Okay. So at this point, it's, in general, it's called opportunity for business to address the committee, and you just have to make three very clear points. First, this is an opportunity for statements to be made in a positive manner. There can be no detrimental comments about any person or position. Secondly, it is not a question and answer session, but we are very aware that very important comments are going to be made. Ms. Solari will be taking notes, and we have a record of all those comments. And thirdly, speakers are allowed three minutes. Reason for that is we give everybody quality time to speak, and not have one person dominate, so I won't be like, quote, "timekeeper." So at this point, I'm going to turn it to you. Does anybody like to speak first about this MSBA core project, the high school?
Sir.
You state your name and your address, please.
Sure. John Harding.
If I could just ask you to come up and sit in front of the mic. Thank you.
Excuse me.
John, if you could spell the last name for Ms. Solari, that'd be great.
Yes, John Harding. H-A-R-D-I-N-G. Thanks. This is on here.
Yep.
Thanks, sir. An address, was it 134 Old Farm Road? Yeah. First off, yes, sir, ladies and gentlemen, you know, thanks for all that you do. Very quickly, my wife and I just moved to town only five months ago. And, you know, we did our selection after almost 30 years in the military of East Long Meadow, very, very delicately, and, you know, with great, you know, interest, because we've got children caught up in the school system. And despite only living here for five months, I guess now, because we've got three kids, we've gotten to meet a lot of folks. I mean, sir, Matt U., you know, Mr. Fracero, we've met, and I think a few others I know from church, but whatnot. I think I speak, well, actually, I know I speak, on behalf of a lot of folks that are really concerned, you know, because, you know, our kids are in sports and in groups and whatnot with other kids from Wilbraham and from Long Meadow and whatnot. And they've got new schools, you know. And where I come from, I'm not sure, you know, Wilmington High School got a new Wilmington, you know, high school. You know, so really, what a lot of folks want to hear is, what can we do to help you? We know that you're working hard. We know the submissions have been made. You know, some folks were, I guess, a little upset, hey, we weren't supposed to get it back in December, you know, where was it we heard on the forum last night? So a couple of the quick points, and nothing's accusatory. Again, it's just, what can the community do to help? You know, how can we get there? You know, what do we need to do? I mean, you know, maybe we need to have more kids in town to increase the enrollment. I mean, but, you know, that was one thing. What was the other thing, I think, we said? You know?
Buildings falling down.
Yeah, buildings falling down. Condemned part of the building. But, you know, yeah, growing enrollment and condemning, yeah. But in any event, you know, how do we get there? Because our kids, you know, are going to be competing against the Long Meadow kids, the Wilbraham kids, and you know what? I've paid for private schools. I don't want to have to do it again. That's why we chose, you know, East Long Meadow. You know, we looked literally Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, and Wilbraham, because, one, we like the rural, beautiful area that, you know, the towns provide. And then, we were on grade schools. We were on niche, you know, looking at, you know, where do they rank? How do the kids do when they get out of here? That is, that's all I care about, you know, because, you know, my kids probably aren't going to be professional athletes, you know, and you're not a professional swimmer anywhere, really, you know? So it's all academics. What's that, sir?
It's all about the endorsements.
Yeah, well, I guess so. But it's, you know, it's all academics, you know? But, you know, in, while I really don't care about, you know, the cosmetic look of a school, you know, the technology and whatnot, you know, the kids need to be able to compete. And right now, we're hamstrung, unfortunately. And so I, and a lot of folks, you know, a lot of folks behind me, want to be part of the solution. And so, just making sure I hit the talking points. But, yeah, you know, and, you know, I think this is just a small representation, you know, behind you that you see, but, you know, even I was on a long run yesterday, and I was over and ran into Long Meadow, caught up with a group, was just talking to the folks, a couple of East Long Meadow folks, citizens. And, you know, I said to them, you know, hey, got a meeting tomorrow, and I think we're going to talk about the school. Oh, yeah, we need a new high school. We need a new high school. So, I mean, I'm sure you've heard.
Right.
And it's like you said, you know, Mr. Thompson, let's talk about the solution. You know, so I think I've hit most of the points. You know, I mean, without beating it up too much, probably been here five months. I mean, others have lived it for years, you know? Other people have lived here their whole lives, and they're looking for the, they're really looking for it, you know?
Let me just see if I can address a couple of points. I think one thing that I feel, and I'm kind of speaking as a principal of this high school for 23 years, the one thing that we always kept in mind is the best interest of the students, which is obvious, so I'll see why I wouldn't be here. And what makes it difficult for us here is that we have to take care of our current students. We can't just let the building run down. We can't stop doing repairs, can't stop doing unnecessary revisions to the building.
Right.
Because we have to take care of our current students, but that does affect us in the future. You take a tour of this building. This building is, looks in wonderful shape, I can guarantee you, from the tiles, the floors, but there are, but the infrastructure is severely aged. It's old. Our electrical grid is maxed out. Our plumbing is in trouble. Our HVAC is in trouble. But when you take this building, and as someone who travels all over the state in different school buildings, this building, to the average person, is a beautiful building. You might find it remarkable to hear that, but it is. Some schools, districts, and I'll say this very carefully, let their buildings run down. They don't make the repairs. They sacrifice the present for the future. And that's what we were caught with a little bit. And we've had, we've done a very comprehensive approach. Every year that this comes up, the past five years, this is the statement of interest here. We review it. We have, we have testing done. As Mr. Smith said, we tested our roofs last year. We've had contests, and they're testing the air quality. We're constantly revising that document every year, so it's a breathing, visible, alive document. It's not something we did five years ago. Here's it, and here it is again. Not at all. That document's changed every single year, and we try to use a very comprehensive approach, from testing to a yearly review, political outreach, local involvement with the town council, DPW. You know, so I guess we're also looking at the other ways to do this that we're missing. And that's why we really appreciate this forum right now. We really do.
We've also had, if you don't mind me adding, we've had the MSBA in to actually walk the school. And we've had our representatives and senators in, right? In to look, and they've written letters on our behalf, and you just feel like you've got that right combination, and we're not overcrowded, and we're not...
If I actually may add to that, so the MSBA came twice, because what they try to do is follow up on statements of interest with, that are competitive with what they call senior studies. So that visit was very much around what we had written in the statement of interest. It was looking at all the different areas. I see many familiar faces in here who toured with me back in May. It was very similar to the tour that I gave all of you in May. I took them, though, into the depths of, say, the weight room and the old locker rooms, because I thought it was important for them to see that. However, to your point, Mr. Marcy-Boucher, they also do their own survey of as many or all the schools in the state, and then they give another rating to the school. There's what we're writing and how they're rating us. And so our ratings, to both your point and Mr. Fracero's point, are decent. And so I'd be interested, and I will continue to research this, as I said, the window to put in another statement of interest, if that's where the school committee would like to go, opened on Friday.
Yes.
Or when.
This is not an option.
Right. I would agree with you, but they have to vote before I can actually do that.
And they will.
They, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
And we elect them.
Right, but I'm assuming they will. Research to make sure, you know, where are the ratings for those schools that actually got in? And that's something I've tried to do each year. But certainly, you know, I'd be interested in the experience you had in Wilmington. You said that they received a new high school.
Yeah, see, I was in fear then, you know, sir. I mean, I...
Because I think each community's experience is a little bit different.
Right, and I can find out.
Okay. Yeah, anyone we can speak to.
Yeah.
Who might help us put together something that is more strategic, that would be fantastic.
Start with great politeness. I'd like to open it up to other people.
Just a three-minute chance, sir. Yes, sir.
Is someone else, please?
I'm up there.
Does someone else would like to speak? Yes, please come up. Oh, it's two, I'm sorry. I saw them.
Oh, I'm just, no, please.
No, I'm...
You're closer.
I'm just going to keep going.
Hi, sir. Your name and address, please, sir.
Steven Crucial, 28, Country Club Drive.
Did you get the spelling, Ms. Solari, for the last name?
I won't spell that one.
Thank you, Mr. Crucial. Please.
I heard you mention earlier that this isn't intended to be a Q and A, right? So I...
Well, we can, you know, we want to be as open as possible, so go ahead.
Is that document publicly available?
We can make it publicly available.
Absolutely. It's a public document.
People, I'd have to copy it. Not all of it is just what we submit through the system, so to speak. I have a lot of sections that are added on to make it hopefully more compelling.
Is there a way to post it on the school department website, or...
Probably, yeah. I'd see if we can scan that and put it on the...
Is that assembled with the help of third parties, or is that a in-house document?
In this document, you have the facility study from 2013, so that was done by Sims Mania McKee Architectural Firm. You have the statement of interest that we put together. You have a study of our roof by Garland Associates. So, you know, you have both outside experts as well as our internal folks putting it together.
Okay. Like the previous gentleman, I mean, we've been here 14 years. We made our selection to move here, same reasons, right? Great, small town, good schools. We want our kids to grow up here. But it's almost like we're fighting the same battle than I know other people are. I mean, I've got neighbors who send their kids to Deerfield. They send them to Wilbraham Monson. And, you know, with all due respect, walking through this high school, I don't find it impressive at all. You know, when you're surrounded by, you know, it's not just Long Meadow and Wilbraham. It's West Side. It's Belcher Town. I mean, there's, there's probably $700 million in new high schools inside 25 miles.
Right.
Chicago is beautiful.
You know, so as we, as you, you know, us, by extension through you, try to figure out, is there something different we could be doing? Is there another angle that we could be somehow, you know, bringing some pressure to bear? I'm sure that everybody in the, in attendance would be more than happy to help figure that out. And I understand that everything can't be a committee, but, you know, by the same token, you know, MSBA is a political organization, right? To pretend that politics don't have something to do with who gets picked is...
Right, we agree with that.
So I don't know what that means for an answer, but it seems as though, yeah, I mean, my kids are getting older, right? I mean, as I start to figure out how long it takes to get a project approved and designed and built.
Right.
And that's what I do for a living. You know, it's like, yeah, I mean, this is five years away from opening the doors, if we decided now.
Right.
You know, and as more and more parents become concerned that, look, you know what? I'm not going to do this. I don't want to move out of town. I love where I live. I love my neighbors. I love my neighborhood. I love being here.
We don't want you to move out of town.
You know, and...
That's where it's headed.
Absolutely. No, I agree.
I mean, as a town, we support our students, and if we, you know, that's the center of the town. And if we don't have that, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I'm looking at other options. I mean, I've been talking to this for four years now.
As are four years.
And we're no further along.
So...
A lot hinges on this project for many families.
And you don't have to convince, I don't think, anybody at this table. We are 100 percent on board. We've been on this project now for five years. It's not unusual for, I'm not making excuses, this is the process we have. It's not unusual for districts to apply six, seven, eight times. We are in good shape for a building relative to others. You can see some, you named some of the new ones that are new. If you think of the old buildings, they were worse than ours is existing now, today. They are funding less projects that were funded in the past. Long Meadow got in when there was more money. Wilbraham has some other issues, regional issues, that helped them along. We are trying what we can do from our end. What folks can probably do, we talked about a political part of this, is contact those that make the decision. We have a state treasurer who's in charge of the MSBA board. That's the first person we should all be contacting on a relatively regular basis. The others are the state reps and the local reps. Those are the way to go. We have to convince MSBA that we are a project. We're not as needy as other towns. We have to admit that. If we let the building go, that's an option. We've always been against that. If we can't produce overcrowding, so we are stuck. This is the process. We continue to apply. The other option is we talk about what we can do instead, because it is conceivable that MSBA could say no for another two, three, four years. And so at what point, we have to think about other options. That's what we have to start to talk about, because I don't know when MSBA is going to invite us into the process. We're not bad enough to get invited in this year. I can't guarantee we're going to be bad enough to get invited next year.
Can I ask, or make a comment to what you just suggested? So in the past, I got the feeling that you guys did not want us to contact MSBA directly, because I wrote letters, and I got a sense that you thought that that wasn't productive. So are you saying something different?
We know this, we've visited the MSBA. We've gone to multiple meetings, and they've seen our faces. They know that we're interested. We have other projects with them, and they know that we work well with them, and so we're a good fit other than the building. Yes, constituents, they need to hear from other people other than just us.
So how come this is the first time?
But why not? But, no, but wait, let me just finish. It's important for those that make decisions to know how to go about things. You are entitled to do whatever you want and contact whomever you want.
How come you guys haven't reached out to us, though, and said, we need, we need your support as a community? Let's get all the parents involved.
Well, and so I think that's what we need to do strategically. To say that we don't talk to people on a regular basis and say, you know, here's what's going on, here's what we've dealt with, here's what we're doing, it's probably, I know it's the number one question I get asked, all around town, and we're doing all we can. And we're doing all we can, and I say the same thing to others, your local reps, state reps. I know some others might have some different strategies, but you got to go to the people and make the decision. We're begging for the money, we're asking for the money, we've done everything they've asked us to do. We've invited them, and we get rejected. And we get rejected because we don't have overcrowding and there are other buildings that are worse. We can't beat that. How does anybody have a solution to beat that? Let me know.
And it is disappointing because we're in a way being punished for taking care of our buildings where others have not. But at the same time, like, we went, I know we went down to Boston in one of the meetings and you walk in there and you see all the other towns coming around and they're practically genufying, "Thank you, thank you," as they're being approved for things, "Well, we got windows yet." And it's a fine line between, maybe if the community as a whole, like, if a group as a whole creates letters of concern in that kind of... Or is it better to have them be barraged by multiple letters? I don't know, but it just, I wonder if we're better cohesive, if we're better separate. And these are all things that we have to think about. I think cohesive is probably a better thing, but as we've grown with this process, and we have grown with it, you know, three years ago, we might have been, "Oh, don't call them, we're nervous." And now we're kind of like, okay, time's come. So it's almost like you got to wait. You got to wait for your turn, and I think the time for our term is obviously here.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is maybe the way to do it is if a group could get together, and it's okay to have a group. I mean, we're limited as to what we can do from our standpoint. But you guys, maybe if you could create something that come together as a group, have signatures maybe, a letter that's cohesive, that talks about the concerns, and maybe we can move on.
Sorry, excuse me. So has SMMA been involved since the original 13 study?
Yeah, each year I contact them and discuss how construction costs may have escalated over the past year. They obviously have a copy of the facility study. And so we look at the individual projects, because they actually looked at all five schools.
Because I know that some communities employ architects and OPMs as part of getting approved because they know how to navigate the system and they know how to read a document like that that's three inches thick and help people to understand who don't do this every day. This is relatively unimportant in terms of what they're going to focus on. This is really important. You need a few more paragraphs here, you need some pictures here, you need whatever it might be. And maybe having that kind of professional assistance would help the grassroots side of the argument to be able to put together an argument that, as someone mentioned, is more cohesive, right? It's more about, everyone is marching to the same sheet of music, right? And as opposed to, you know, somebody running off, getting down a rabbit hole that's perhaps contrary to what's in that document or to what your broader strategy might be. And I'm not sure how to coordinate that, but it feels like it would want to be something that was organized together as opposed to, you know, we're doing our own thing, you're doing your own thing, and we cross our fingers and hope that it's the same. I can yield my time if someone wants to.
I know, we're going to agree with you, and Beth.
Would there's a woman, I just want to...
I would ask you to please go up and...
I just want to say, you know, I think, because a woman, you're all set? You want to come up, please? Someone wants to speak, please come up.
People who watch this later at home won't be able to hear you unless you hear the microphone.
I don't have... Is this good enough? Michelle Valchinos, and resident mother of students in the school. I couldn't agree more with you, Beth, and Greg, and all of you. Thank you for what you've done. I think what we need to do is put the past in the past and move forward as a group as much as possible to, for the community and for everybody. And I think that would be the best approach. And I, sorry, forgot your name, but I think that is also the right approach to employ the right people to help us, because they are professionals and know how to get this done. And that's it.
Please come right up. Selene, did you get that, Selene? Did you get that last name?
And I apologize in advance for my last name. Lauren Parzivan, P as in Peter, A R, Z as in zebra, I, V as in Victor, A, N as in Nancy, D as in David, Seven Spade Arden.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Lots of practice. I guess my question is, I mean, I grew up in East Long Meadow. I moved back recently, well, five years ago, not so recently anymore. My mom is employed in Long Meadow. I have all my life heard about all the Long Meadow schools going through lots of renovations and so forth. And I'm wondering, have you ever gone over there and said, "How did you get the money?" Like, have you ever conferred with the other towns and said, "What is the difference between your proposal and ours?" Because what I worry about, especially if you say population is part of the issue, is how are you going to maintain the population here? How are you going to keep... Because once kids hit high school, I mean, that's the most important step for them. They are either going to stay here for high school or they are not, or they are going to look to private school options, in which case you will never get the population needed for the expansion or the renovations of the school. So I just want to make sure, I mean, again, I want to venture out every avenue.
So to answer your question in terms of consulting, every year I consult with the local superintendents who have received a project. When we first submitted our first statement of interest five years ago, I actually sat with West Springfield superintendent, the Long Meadow superintendent at the time, and the Amman Wilbraham superintendent, and looked at what they had written that finally got them in. The interesting thing, and that's not discounting, you know, hiring a consultant to look at that, much of their statements of interest had less detail than the statement of interest we're submitting. So it didn't give us something that, at the time, that I'd say, "Oh, my gosh, that's, how did I miss that? We should add that in." So maybe having someone such as a professional consultant look at it in addition to SMMA consulting with me on the phone, yeah, that might be a good option. Two years ago, Sharon High School was invited in. And their statement of interest was incredibly sparse. And the one thing they had was overcrowding.
Okay.
And so I feel the frustration that you're feeling.
I just, could it be that we're giving them too much detail? Could it be that they're finding too many places that we're succeeding and...
But I also wanted to answer the second part of your question, which is in terms of what are we doing with students? So we've become very creative, knowing that our electrical system is at its maximum capacity. That means that we're moving toward laptops, we're moving towards Chromebooks. We are also, so there are mobile carts where they're charging, and we're sort of moving that around the school, if you will. This area here originally was a vocational area for this school. So interestingly enough, as we become creative and we look at different things that we can and cannot do, the power sources here actually can handle much more machinery than, say, in the other end of the school.
Okay.
Because this was built for vocational machines and so forth. And so those are the type of things that we explore. We work with our DPW and our IT department to say, okay, how do we handle this piece to make sure that our students have everything they need and have the best experience possible? What I can't do, and this is what I write quite a lot about and spoke with the parents that toured the school in May, is I can't expand the science lab walls.
Right.
And so that's something where we provided visuals for them so they could see what our science labs look like. Because the response we had gotten from one of the visiting individuals was, "Oh, great, you have science labs." But that's not the point, that we need the science labs to be up to 21st century capacity and learning environments.
All right.
So, but I didn't want you to, as you made or asked that question, think that on a daily basis, we're not looking to do everything we can to enrich the experience of our students here.
Well, thank you very much. And again, thank you all for what you do.
My name is Darlene Reese Sidik, and I live at 159 Canterbury Circle. And I did not grow up in town like most people here. I am from Maryland, and I relocated here in 2000. I moved to East Long Meadow when I had children, because I heard this was a great school district. And I opted to build a home here. My husband and I have jobs that we can move anywhere. And we're at a point now that this project has been declined for the sixth year in a row, or maybe more. I might be wrong there.
Fifth year.
Okay, I don't want to wish us bad luck for the future here, for five years. That, I'm going to tell my husband to start looking to leave. He's a physician, it's maybe time for us to go. I was fortunate enough to go on a tour with that tour that Gordon referenced in May. And I was appalled, I was shocked. The school is in way worse condition than I thought. And I know, with all due respect, you know, you have been doing what you can from an R and M stance. And I recognize, I've run capital projects before. I used to be a director of operations for Six Flags. That's what brought me to the area. Was in management there for 20-plus years, and went to corporate. So I understand managing construction projects and overseeing projects and from start to finish, conceptual to finish. But what is disappointing is when you talk about capacity. And when we did that tour, you referenced capacity. And I don't know if it was stated properly. You know, to tour the physics class in particular, where you were showing during that tour, the science of today, where you brought in some of the technology of today and merged it with the past. I don't think that the capacity was, issues were stated properly in the application. Because the teachers in this school physically get up and move the desks when it's not lab time. Now, it's going to take one back injury, one injury, to maybe sync what's going on here. That's not just how a school system should be built. You know, the school, the science of my day, which I graduated in 1989, had a chemistry lab more modern than that. And I wasn't in a new school. It's actually been renovated about five years ago now. So, and it was new, it was older than 1964, whichever year this one was built. So I'm a little shocked. I'm here because I don't know what the transparency process is on this project. But I was lucky enough to be just brought in by a few people that had been working closely with the school committee. But I'm not sure, I'm going to go to my notes now because I want to make sure it hits some of these points. But, you know, as a committee, what are you going to do differently? I loved your question, Mr. Thompson. I love that you said, "What's the strategy going forward?" Because what you've been doing in the past is not working. It clearly has been ineffective. And it's got to change, whether that means involving a committee of folks behind that are here that are concerned and utilizing them, and I don't know why you can't. Especially, it sounds like you have some experts in construction here and some experts with the MSBA here that are willing to help. And maybe it took this decline to get this many folks here, and shame on us, but we're here. And we're concerned, because the impact of this project, you know, affects all of our properties. And I'm not the only one in this room. I know a lot of folks here that built and relocated here. Some folks grew up here and wanted to give their children the same experience they had and enjoyed being a student of yours. And they want that. But it's getting harder and harder to sell that daily. So as a concerned resident, I'm now worried, you know, that, let's see, let me go back, about the quality of the education for my children. The loss of tax growth, the town revenue should be a concern to everyone in this room. The committee and the superintendent are entrusted with the responsibility to grow young minds, improve our school, bring in new technology, and to improve educational opportunities to grow our town. I don't know what's been happening the last few years, but it's time to change that and help you guys get this approved and move forward together with more folks. So really, I'm hoping to hear tonight, you know, and maybe we won't have those answers tonight. Respectfully, I understand that. But I'm hoping to hear in the future what the next steps will be and hoping to hear that we're going to have better transparency in the process. Had I not heard from a friend who then put and then saw it on the forum, I'm not sure I would have known we were declined. That shouldn't be the case. We all pay tax dollars here. We deserve to know the process along the way.
So would you like a phone call for that? How would you like us to notify everybody?
This is the way we do it through a meeting.
You would have notified tonight.
All of us are asking a suggestion.
Why not, why not a robocall? You want more noise from us? Get more noise out of where you are in the process. Why not have a webpage or a share project space? You guys are all over Google Chrome now, use Google Drive, use, come up with new ways to communicate with us.
I actually think it wasn't so much we didn't want people to know. I think what happened was, we found out right before the holidays, and it just kind of went right into the holidays. And tonight, actually, was the meeting where we were going to be outrageously discussing it. And I mean, that is just the timing.
Timing is tough there.
I think even their timing is bad for it. I mean, it's kind of like they want to hide it under, you know...
Just stating, like, I don't know the way that things are communicated. And I'm just bringing forward a message from residents. I'm not the only one that feels this right. And this is a compilation of notes from many of us today. I just happen to be the sacrificial lamb sitting here right now. And I'm glad to take that bullet, because I care.
Right. Let me take a bullet, I'm sorry, your first name was Denise?
Darlene.
Darlene, thank you, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure, and maybe I'm getting too sensitive, and I apologize if I am. The quality of education in this building is still first rate. Believe the things that our students are doing in this building, and I'm a participant from the senior projects to the type of work the career center is doing, to our test scores, we still have a high part of education here. I agree with you, Darlene, a building is a very important factor to the environment. It's a very important factor, and I agree with you. We've got to do something different other than this. I don't know what that is. The only thought I have is Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Lesser, Mr. Ash, and Mr. Poopel will have to hear from us. And Mr. Smith reached out to them last year, they all wrote letters of support for this.
They need to walk it when it rains.
He did, he did.
In the rain? When it's flooding?
Well...
That's actually...
Some of the locker rooms are closed down because we have some kind of virus walking through it. Or asking them to jump in the pool when there's Band-Aids in the pool.
Or when the filter's broken and we had our swim team swimming in it.
Right.
Which we probably weren't even up to chemical standards there, but... They have since fixed it, which I'm very grateful for, since my kids are on the swim team.
I think, yes, we all feel very much that it, as I look at it, I'm, I look geographically. Long Meadow, Hamton, Wilbraham, you go out to East Hampton, to West Springfield, et cetera. They've all got new buildings. I'm feeling the same anxiety that everybody else is feeling, especially someone like such as I, who was hired in here in 1987. I know we need a new building, I know we do. And it's just, and I can tell you, that is a lot of work, and it's well done. And we change it every year, to try to capture what we want to do.
Do we need a new writer? Do we need a new author? Do we need someone that's not a part of this committee? Do we need to contract someone? Do we need not, someone that's completely outside the loop that is better at persuasive writing than we are?
Normally, I would probably jump on that, but I'm going to say to you that when Diane Sullivan says that we are competitive, says that we're doing the right thing...
But we're not getting selected. Six years in a row, or five years.
But we can't make up things that don't exist in this building. And the crux of it is, we're not qualifying under the criteria that they're laying out for us. So it's the process that...
But you can make up if you properly state a capacity. If we're not writing that the teachers are physically moving desks.
We do.
That is not appropriate.
We properly state the capacity of this building and how many students are in it. Those are facts, and that we're not overcrowded.
Are we just stating head counts?
We're stating the criteria they're requesting from us, yes.
It's a very structured process.
Again, on the red...
Here's my point, here's my point, darling.
The application is not out there for me to read, that's the transparency I'm having.
You can read it, come read it, walk into this office, take two hours of your time and read it. It's a public document. All you have to do is ask. We can't call everybody and say, "There's a document, you can come and read." It's here, ask.
Why are you so hostile? I simply said, can it be uploaded and available?
This is not hostile. Part of the sensitivity is that we have put an awful lot of time into this, and we are very frustrated with the process, and we feel your pain. And many of us, all of us have been touched by students in this building or in other buildings and want what's best for them. So to say that we are lacking in what we're doing, we're open for other approaches, but it's not for lack of trying, I just want to make that clear, I guess is my point.
I believe you...
Do you understand that, though?
I believe, yes, and I believe for the record. I didn't say you haven't been lacking in what you're doing, I'm saying we need a new approach.
Okay, Darlene, I'm going to...
But if I can, we might, we need more involvement, yes, but I don't know the approach is wrong. We're following the procedures and the policy, 70 districts applied, 12 got in.
Okay, Darlene, I'm going to move to Mr. MacRaveni, thank you very much. Mr. MacRaveni, you state your name, please, and the address.
Bob MacRaveni, 348 Pinehurst Drive, East Long Meadow. I've been a resident here for, I guess, I don't know, 56 years. And I have four grandkids. It looks like my first three aren't going to make it into a new high school. I blame all this on Rick Fuchero, because for 23 years, he walked around every morning and night with a rag in his hand and a screwdriver fixing stuff. And had come back to haunt us because we have maintained this building too well. And I say that because I'm in a ski group, and about 12 years ago, we had a lady in our ski group for about eight years who was on the school board in Long Meadow. And she and I, there was a lot of conversations going on, two hours up and two hours back from skiing. And she always said, she said, "In Long Meadow, we did a lousy job of maintaining our schools." And fortunately, unfortunately, in East Long Meadow, and I've been on a roofing study committee here in years past, we have replaced all the roofs in the schools. We have done an outstanding job of maintaining the school. And it's kind of coming back to bite us now in that sense. But just a thought, you know, everybody talks about a green building and everything. And maybe what you can do, if you can get some data on what our operating costs are, electricity-wise, fuel-oil-wise, and, you know, per square foot, and maybe get that and... And maybe get that, and, and you, you might already have it in your, you know, in your presentation, and see what other schools are doing. And I think you'd find that we're probably spending a lot of dollars per student, m- m- more than, uh, what others, these new schools, you know, being green buildings and being very conservative operating-wise. That might be something else to look at.
Sure.
And maybe hit 'em with the, you know, from the green buildings.
What actually is in here, um, and it, maybe can even go a step further, is that, um, the lighting in all of our buildings has been, um, renovated so that we are actually, um, a greener, at least with lighting.
And that's, that's our problem, because we're maintaining the school too well.
Right. So, you know, maybe that's something that's actually subtracting from our, but, uh, it's still worth getting the data and making a look at that.
It might turn out to be interesting. That might be another approach from an operating, you know, operating cost standpoint.
Yes, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do. I like hearing, you know, thoughts that we can put into place, possibly.
Yeah, and I, before I close out this session, I'd say, anybody else would like to speak, please?
When's the next one due, sir? When's the next one due?
So, the process is, um, it opened on Friday, um, January fourth, and it is due in late April. And basically, what happens is, the first part of the process is, um, we get a new log-on. We go into their system, and they repopulate the information that we've given them previously. And then we start to add anything we can, um, based on, you know, the roof or, um, the electrical system.
Isn't the pool near?
The pool is not something that they actually reverse.
What's there being condemned, the locker rooms?
I'm sorry?
I mean, aren't the locker rooms near?
Locker rooms, they've, they've gone through and certainly are documented in here.
Is there anything to do to just?
We can, we can let the building go. That's the option, is to let things go like that. But we fix it, because we have students in the building that use it. It's a catch twenty-two. If there's a better solution, we're all ears.
I think if we just let it go, and then keep the academics where they're at, we're at nine out of ten.
I've got kids in this building, though. I would want them using the locker room as best they can use it, though.
I didn't wanna sacrifice my life for the last eighteen years, but I did.
He was saying, someone else wants some difference to speak.
You know, suck it up, you know? My kids, you can let it go while my kids get there, you know? Let it go, let it go.
Can you name an address?
I know, but, but here's the thing, though.
About the academics.
Okay, John, let me just answer the rest of the process.
Hi there. Uh, Patricia Carando, Old Farm Road. Um, you know, several school committee members I've talked to at length about the school building. I wanna tell you something that, as much as I take the sentiments, I want a new building. We moved here for the schools, because your numbers are great, and your teachers are great. As much as I want a new building, and I'm adamant that I want a new building, and I believe that all the parents want that. We all want that. I wanna just, I have no intention of talking. I wanna thank you for the exceptional teachers that are in this building. My, I have two children in this building, and while there are lots of physical issues in this building, Wi-Fi issues, all kinds of problems, my kids are taking wonderful classes and have wonderful teachers. And a school environment is not just the walls, it is the teachers, it is the support that they get from administration. And I wanna thank you for that, and I want a new building. That's it. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Smith finish, and then I think we'll take a recess and give a chance for anybody in the audience who wants to approach a school committee member to speak to him, because some people may have felt a little bit uncomfortable speaking in front of a crowd. So, Mr. Smith will finish. All five of us will be available for the next five or ten minutes after that, if you want to approach any of us. Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to, um, finish off on what the process entails. So, it opens up, as I said, on January fourth. As we're developing the statement of interest, we also then have to have a school committee vote that indicates they are supporting submitting another statement of interest. And then we go in front of the town council, and they have to vote that they're supporting another statement of interest. It's, um, without those two votes, you can't even submit. Uh, so, once we get those, then we finalize the document, and we have to get it in, uh, physically, in this type of format.
There's some important, if I could make, that, uh, Mr. Smith spoke about, is that the council is the other part of this issue, the town council. And they all need to be on board going forward, and there is some things you can do with theirs, them as well. So, it's worth saying that, because it's not only us that sign up on the request, it's also the council. So, thank you for pointing that out.
One quick, quick, really quick.
Okay, quick, please.
To what Mrs. Carando said, um, I know some of us have kids in the school, some of us have students who have graduated. And I get it, it's not a pretty sight, but my kids were accepted into an exceptional school. We stayed right here. And they graduated, and they're in college, and one's graduating early, and the other one's not paying a penny. It's because of their hardware, but what they were taught in this ugly building. They had everything they needed, and our kids have some better technology in this sad little building than other schools around us. It's not an excuse for us not to get a better school. I get it. But I want you guys to know, they're not lacking because of it, but we do need a new school.
Okay, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, please. All of us approach, while I'm gonna step out to the audience, just to have a. Well, back from our recess, um, we're now turning to another exciting, exhilarating report from our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Take it away.
Okay, all. So, in your package, you will see, uh, five point two point one is a request from Maple Shade, uh, for, to accept the check from Grinnan Barrett for the commission for one thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I have a motion.
And we'll go to the gift account.
I move to accept the check from, was this Maple Shade we started with?
That's correct.
Um, from Grinnan Barrett for, uh, one thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars, eighty-seven cents.
Have a second.
For the Maple Shade pick-up.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, we unanimous?
Okay, the next one, five point two point two, and this is, uh, from Birchland Park, from Grinnan Barrett, asking you to accept two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents to be deposited into the Birchland Park gift account.
Do you have a motion?
I move to accept the two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, ninety-two cents from Grinnan Barrett to be put into the gift account at Birchland Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
We are unanimous again. Five two point three, keep going.
There we go. So, the last one is from Mountain View, and again, this is from Grinnan Barrett, the commission check for one thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars, forty cents to go into the Mountain View gift account.
Do you have a motion, Mrs. Massey-Bach?
I move to accept the one thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents from Grinnan Barrett for the Ma- Mountain View gift account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, uh, any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, we are unanimous again. Okay, Mr. Smith, seven point one, our calendar. Am I gonna say one thing before you start?
Absolutely, please.
Uh, the, um, uh, collaborative committee and our meeting voted unanimously for this calendar. Uh, I think it's pretty much what you've seen before, but Mr. Smith does wanna bring up one wrinkle.
Oops.
So, um, the start of the year, the end of the year, very much similar to how we've done the last, um, six to really eight years. All the half-days and the professional development days are very similar as well. The wrinkle is that traditionally, in, um, December, we have that last day before vacation as a half-day. So, that's still an option, but what we discussed with the ELEA, and then with the leadership team in reviewing this calendar, is, um, and then I threw it out to the other six districts in the LPVC, is we're taking the twenty-third as part of the vacation, so we're not coming back for one half-day. And so, the question is, does the twentieth become a full day, if that's what the committee chooses, keeping the twenty-third as a part of the vacation? Or should we make it a half-day as we've done in previous calendars?
I think taking that twenty-third off is fantastic. Just letting you know.
I would say, yeah, keep the twentieth as a full day.
I would keep it as a full day, because it's ending, it's ending the week. It's not like you're breaking anything up, so.
Right.
I will admit, we did do a full day.
Yeah, but how are the students on the twenty, the Friday before?
I will say, I will say honestly that.
How are the teachers Friday before?
I like that. I like that a lot.
In the school, in the school that I was in this past year, the children were, of course, they were pajama day or whatever it was, and the children actually were far better behaved than the adults. Nothing got learned. Movies were watched in the afternoon. Um, it was a great day for the kids. So, it was bonding, but, I mean, I don't know what was learned.
But educators set the tone for what activities happen within the context, and leadership sets the tone.
So, if you're looking at that as a full week of school prior to launching into, what I think this time will be almost eight days of, of school days, so there's a break.
I think either way, I don't think they're gonna learn anything. I think it's gonna be more.
Well, I think they can.
Yes, they can, and I agree with that.
Did we have a full day this past?
No.
We had a half-day.
The twenty-first was a half-day.
Yeah.
So, that was the point of discussion. As well, you know, if we're gonna not come back to the new week for one day, or one half-day on the twenty-third, do we make the twentieth a full day, finish the week, vacation?
I'm more inclined with the full day and finish the week as a regular week.
I mean, we are giving the twenty-third off.
You're giving, and, cause you're getting the twenty-third. If you were bringing it back for that one day, then it'd be a different story, but, you know, it's not, that's not part of the discussion.
And you're talking about five full days before a major holiday. So, if we're looking at a lapse in instruction that's happening five days prior, then we've gotta talk about a very different.
There's bigger, there's bigger things.
Context around that.
I would just like to add, um, so we had a half-day the Friday before Christmas break this past year, and, um, at the high school at least, a lot of students were doing like singing telegrams, and, um, this year, we launched like our new hot chocolate program where the senior class was selling hot chocolate throughout the day. So, um, in all honesty, like, a lot of festivities were happening, but not as much the learning side of things. So, um, I think I would speak on behalf of almost every student in saying that we kind of would be looking for a half-day. But, just in terms of like, winding down.
Down to that.
Right, but, you know, I look at the eight-day break.
What did the, um, ELI say? Did they just like, were they?
They knew that, uh, they understood as we were talking about it, um, and I gave them feedback from the leadership team um, that, you know, basically providing the twenty-third as part of the vacation, the thought was, um, to go a full day on the twentieth, sort of as the give and take. There was understanding, they thought that it probably is going to be met with, um, lack of a better term, sadness.
I think, what about the other districts in the LPVC?
So, the rest of the districts in the LPVC, um, are going full day on the twentieth, and twenty-third is a day of part of the vacation. The one exception, the South Wicktall and Granville, they are gonna go half-day on the twenty, twentieth, and, um, keep the twenty-third as a, as part of the vacation.
Okay.
So, they were the only ones to, um, I, when I sent it out, quick survey, straw poll, what have you, um, that said that they would go half-day on the twentieth.
Yeah.
So, really, the calendar is yours. So, you know, all these groups, the collaborative committee, the leadership team contribute feedback to put together a draft, but the, ultimately, the calendar is the school committee's.
So, the, the way the calendar reads now, the twentieth is a full day.
Full day.
It's a full day, correct.
So, but, but I go back to Jake's point, it was kinda my point as well, though, and I think it's that last day is, is, um, not on task always. So, but, I'm wondering if we could reemphasize, uh, that we're all on task till Thursday, if we go Thursday full day, and then a half-day Friday. I'm just wondering if that's something we can.
Sure.
Talk about and address.
I, I don't think that's, I, I mean, I, I don't think it's an issue in terms of being on task, um, like this year through Thursday. You're feeling there, there was.
I think it is. I think we shut down a week early sometimes, and we start vacation. I feel it, I'm, I'm overgeneralizing. And I know there's lots of things that happen that are value, have value during the day, and I'm not dismissing that. I'm just, from an outside perspective, which we just saw what an outside perspective looks like as well, we're not a hundred percent on learning a full week before the end of school. So, I would be more inclined to say, well, if we reemphasize being on learning as long as possible, whatever we decide is the right time, then maybe that Friday is a half-day, and we, we have a little bit of celebration, and we move on with the week. Cause in reality, everybody knows what the Friday is before vacation, so, whatever. So, I would be open either way, I guess is my point.
I'm on the collaborative committee, so I, I'd like to counter that a week that we have.
All right, then I'll take a stab at it. I'll make a motion to approve the draft twenty nineteen, twenty twenty cal- school calendar as presented.
And most, we have a second.
I second.
Any discussion?
Good, the other word, uh, day I just wanted to ask about was that Friday, uh, first back in August. Are we still, we still wanna take that, the thirtieth? That, I used to like it a lot.
Yeah, no, it's still, right now, it's.
That's there.
No, I know it's still there. I'm just, no, it's there.
I mean, it really, the only time you get into a challenge with that is if we have more than five snow days. Even with five snow days, you're out on the eighteenth.
I, well, I know, that's.
Yeah, that was always part of the, part of the deal. That was always part of the deal, starting before Labor Day was go with that Friday.
Right. Was that the next part of the contract?
No.
I mean, I would have to keep the opposite. I would say keep them in school on Friday.
Yeah, it was, it was something that had begun probably now seven years ago, and, just in discussion.
Seven, oh, no.
It was longer than that.
I'm a grounds principal, I, we, we put this in fifteen years ago, I think.
I was on, I was on the collaborative committee when this came in.
I didn't think I had it my first year super.
Yes, you did.
Absolutely.
Which one, that Friday?
Yeah.
No, that wasn't that long.
I thought.
It just came along when I got here.
No, I was a principal when we did it.
It was a long time ago.
I remember, we're going back eleven, twelve years.
It must've gone away when you retired.
We, I was here when we brought it on board. I'm not gonna take the blame for it, but.
And I was the principal when you came on board, so it makes sense.
Oh, when you were, ten years, ten years. I meant it ten years.
And I was on the collaborative committee when it, when it happened.
Yes, yes, okay, that was good.
Okay, so, a motion, if we have a second, are we ready to vote? Can I do a roll call, cause it could be?
What are we voting for as presented?
As presented.
Just vote it.
Come on, Fonseca.
Yes.
Mr. Julio.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Ficharo, yes?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right.
I wanted that half-day, man.
Jake, we did take a promise.
Yeah, we tried, Jake. But, you know what?
I do think there's gonna be no learning that day, but, only because I just, I just, I just enjoyed that.
Hey, you know what? Hey, maybe it'll snow, maybe it'll snow, and the argument will be over.
No, I don't want to snow.
Jake, all the students will be very glad you spoke up.
We can go for a walk on that day.
You have their back.
Okay, there you go.
Sink on us.
Okay, seven point two, revisit waiver of twelve-month retirement notice per Article Nine of the Secretary's contract.
You got the two?
Uh, two, but two at once.
Yeah, just, I move that we approve the twelve-month waivers, uh, for retirement as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, we unanimous?
I'm abstaining.
And, that's right, sorry, that's right. Miss Massey-Bach abstained. You broke my unanimous streak, girl.
Sorry.
Seven point three, always a fun thing to talk about, the budget development. Miss this, that, somehow, I think I've seen this memo before.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's following a similar pattern to past years.
Jeez, no.
But basically, wanted to let you know, no, it was twenty eighteen.
Oh, it was, oh, I thought you were backwards. Okay.
Yeah, after, um, handling, um, the capital plan early September and October, um, we did in November start to move into the operational budget development, and, um, I give you an idea in terms of the leadership team meetings, November twenty-ninth, December twentieth, and then just this past week, January third, we've started to discuss, um, potential requests for next year. We've also reviewed school committee goals that, um, concerned the budget, and so, requests right now have been predominantly around expanding what we're doing for social emotional education, um, and support. And, um, we will bring those forward, uh, as you turn the page of the, the document, probably on the, um, twenty-second and February fourth. The tentative part, as you turn the pages, um, I don't know exactly what the town's budget timeline will be, so those are tentative in terms of around where they've been in the past. We are going to outreach, uh, this week, as Sarah Menard, who's the finance director for the town, is coming back off a leave, and, um, hopefully at least have some preliminary discussions, if not formal discussions, in terms of department heads getting an idea of, of, um, the budget process and timeline.
I do like, kind of, as I said before, thematic, I do like maybe one presentation, one look at, you know, social emotion. I do think that's more powerful. I'd like to help, Mr. Thompson, when you and I were talking one time, you know, uh, the fight department going full-time. I mean, that's something people can visualize. It's, 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 it's clear what's going on. I think, instead of coming in with, we need a teacher here, a teacher there, I like to, thematic, like, we can say, we're, we're trying to improve our social emotional program. Here's what we need to do. I think it's much more powerful than being scattered.
Okay.
You know, and just a thought.
And that's, that's where our discussions have, um, centered, the last, uh, two leadership team meetings. So, we'll continue to work with the schools. What I basically, uh, told the leadership team after our last discussion on the third was that I was, um, discussing the timeline with all of you at this meeting, and that, um, we would work with each school regarding what they're presenting, and then we'll bring all the presentation to all of you for discussion.
Okay, you can make that decision. Okay. So, you're saying that the twenty-second, we'll have the leadership team here, or the first meeting? So, you're saying that the 22nd, we'll have the leadership team here, or the first meeting in February?
No, actually, I mean, if you would like the leadership, you can, leadership team, you can have them. I was gonna bring their request to you in a presentation, so you can discuss.
If you need the leadership team here, we can do so.
Correct. Generally, late February, they're all here anyway for the mid-cycle, so if you wanted to build in budget as well, they'd be here.
Okay.
So, our next meeting is Tuesday, just to keep everybody.
That's right.
That's after Martin Luther King.
Right after Martin Luther King Day, so just a little FYI.